All right, I call this meeting of the Prosper Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present. All board members are present. This meeting has been duly called and a notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Mr. Wilburn, will you lead our invocation, please?
We're going to pause for a moment of prayer. For those of you who are in the room and desire to join us, we ask you to bow your heads and join us in prayer. For those of you who desire not to, then we ask that you just simply observe a moment of silence. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you for allowing us to see another day. We thank you for allowing us to make it to this appointed time. We thank you for each and every student that's in this room. Thank you for the gift of life. We thank you for every family that's represented. We thank you for parents. We thank you for community members. I gotta pray for this meeting. I thank you for my colleagues who join me here and I pray and ask that as we enter into this time of addressing the business of the Prosper Independent School District that you will allow us to be mindful of the duties that you've assigned to our hands to do. We pray for this world in which we live and we pray for all the many things that are happening, both good and bad. We lift it up before you. This is our prayer. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right.
I'd like to ask the Prosper Education Foundation to come forward. And I'm going to go the other way. Mr. Bridges, do you want to...
Oh, sure.
So, we are so very fortunate at Prosper ISD to have one of the strongest and most supportive Prosper Education Foundation, I'll say in the nation. And they are always here for us. They're always here, most importantly, for our students, but also for our staff. And they are here tonight to give us yet another token of their appreciation and their hard work. It takes countless hours for them to get out, beat the streets and make sure that we have people who are willing. But it's all about the impact story. And they talk about our students, they talk about our staff, they talk about the impact that they've had on kids. And this is how a foundation runs, to really tell that story of the importance of a school district, especially a public. So, thank you so much to all of you.
Yeah. I just want to say, if you were to first in this, you know, everything you said, this board, this is a portion of our board, but we don't get to do what we get to do without everybody standing in this room today. Our community is what helps us do this here today, to give this money to the district to support the teachers, the students of our district. And so, this money is made up, I just wanted to spend some time and kind of talk about what the money's made up of. A hundred thousand dollars of this goes to professional development to support the staff and educators of PISD. And so, Dr. Ferguson and the administration uses that to really continue to attract and retain top talent. Thirty thousand of this goes to Hope Squad. There's some people in yellow in the room today. And as we know, mental health of our students is so important. And so, thirty thousand goes to support the Hope Squad initiative. Twenty-five thousand goes to the RISE program, which is making, giving our educators a chance to try something different outside, in the classroom, and really study that research, right, as a research project. And so, we support that. And here also includes, y'all know we have scholarships, we just took scholarship applications, but there's AP tests, dual credit scholarships in this money as well, to help students who don't see, maybe don't see college as their next career path, but see a CTE certification. And so, we are excited as a foundation to get to say thanks to the school board, Dr. Ferguson, administration, all the campus administration that's here today. So, here we go. Let's do this.
We can't thank you enough. You all get up here where you deserve to be in this picture.
Come on up here.
This is an amazing team and I get to sit with them and listen to all their dreams for our kids, so, and staff. Everyone ready?
Do you see everybody?
All right. Here we go. Thank you so much. We're going to go straight to the bank with that, Dr. Penn. If we can just get it through that tube, send it up.
If we can do that, if we can do that every month, I think it's a great way to start a meeting. No pressure.
No pressure.
Thank you. Okay.
So, we have such an amazing opportunity this evening, and I know that all of you in the audience, and hopefully those of you who are watching live, have gotten to experience just a small, small piece of the excellence in Prosper ISD, and that is the Reynolds Jazz Band. Mrs. Tina Parr, I want you to make sure you're waving, and then all of our band instructors. Our students come to us as clay to be molded, and we have amazing education and give their heart and soul to our kids to give them the overall best experience that they can possibly have. And I had the honor of being able to go down to San Antonio, February 10th, I believe, was the exact date, and I was able to see our jazz band onstage at the Texas Music Educators Association, which is, it's such a high honor. This is the Super Bowl for these kiddos, and a lot of times, people don't really understand the impact of how big this is. We've had two different groups from Prosper ISD. Rogers Choir made it one year, and then now we've had the Reynolds Jazz Band. So, it is not something easy to acquire. But when you hear these students play, you will be taken to a different place. I found myself closing my eyes and I felt like that I was at a professional jazz concert. It was mind-blowing what they're capable of doing. So, I want you all to have a little experience and be able to hear the greatness that our kids bring to us. Ms. Parr, Mr. Alström?
Well, I had a whole speech written, but... That's exactly the introduction that we need. I would just also add that we want to acknowledge Mr. Goldsmith, Principal at Reynolds Middle School, for all his support, Mr. Holt, for Prosper High School, Mr. Dan, Mr. Cook, in addition to Ms. Parvath, Mr. Matthews, our percussion pair professional who helps with the rhythm section, and of course, the alumni in the band. Alumni, come and wave if you're handing, they were dancing behind. Last thing I would say is, we're just going to play one tune. We snuck in a couple tunes while we were waiting for you guys to come down, so we've already had some pauses. Great sharing. Just want to acknowledge Ms. Parr once again. Take us away with Escalator Blues.
Do it. One, two. One, two, three.
Wait just a minute, Ms. Parr.
Thank you. We want to sincerely thank the school district, the school board, everybody who's important to be able to do this one. And show them off. I wanted to get the whole group up here because the concert consisted of the seventh and eighth quarters, three songs, and then we had four songs that we brought back to the students that were in it a year before. And so, there's two different groups combined together, and I wanted to get them all recognized and get a quick picture with all of them in there. And so, because we have Prosper High School kids in here and with Reynolds, we'll give them another round.
If you are a Reynolds Jazz Band parent, please raise your hand if you're standing, and if you're seated, please stand up, because this doesn't happen without amazing parent support. I will say, I did see a few of you on the River Walk. Just kidding, just kidding.
Y'all go back, like, grab yourself a decodex.
Excellent job.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. Thank you. Good job, guys. Thank y'all.
Isn't that great? They are great.
Slide right into... Yep, there you go. So, the only thing, the action item we have, it's an agenda, it's just on the review.
I don't know. She's not here. Drew's here. So, dance here.
Okay, for our band parents, we would love for you to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you certainly, if you need to make your exit, we certainly understand where you are if you'd like to make your way out to go celebrate and reconnect with your student. Okay, so, we're going to go ahead and start with an enrollment update. Our current enrollment at this moment, as of today, is 22,484. On this report that was in your board packet, we were at 22,469, and that puts us a little over 2,700 additional students from year to year. So, I would say we're growing.
Year over year.
Yes. Next up on the agenda, we have our Prosper ISD Board Subcommittee for Zoning. Sadly, because of the fast growth in the enrollment, we continue to have the need for zoning. We will be opening Joyce Hall Elementary in August of 2022, and so, that has caused us to have to look at some lines and move some students. Couple of things that I want to point out to you, part of Light Farms, which is kind of that southern boundary there in the blue, that was going to Light Farms Elementary, if we left those students at Light Farms, we would be looking at 1,052 students.
Why is it in the middle of three?
And then, the following would be 1,200. So, 1,050, then to 1,200 students.
Okay, I'm going to add, you have one warning, and then you have to be asked to leave, okay? That's your warning. Yes, ma'am.
So, and then with Boyer, that would be 580 students if we left it as is. I will say, one of the things that, I know we have a lot of people moving into the area, but these were both Light Farms Elementary school sites that we were given. One was just named Boyer Elementary, and then one, Light Farms Elementary. We will put this out for comments, so parents and the community can give feedback, and then we will not take this to the board or bring this to you until the March Board Meeting for Action.
Great.
Okay?
Very good.
There are the numbers, and you can see kind of what's happening across the district. So, an update on our class size waivers also, along with growth, we're up to 91 waivers, again, still hitting in those really hot spots, Johnson Elementary, Bryant Elementary. So, we're seeing that rise. We are making some adjustments just with class sizes by campus that are in fast growth, and then the campuses that are more in that terminal zone where there's not new homes being built, we're adjusting those numbers accordingly to, as we start moving forward, looking into the 22, 23 school year. Any questions about that?
Do we have, there it is. That's what I was going to ask for.
Yes. Yeah, so, it's Bryant, Johnson, Light Farms, Bradley, Winsong Ranch, Reeves is also on there, and you can see the breakdown by grade level if you look in to this box. Oops.
Any questions or comments on that? It's not an action item, but, okay?
Okay, and then our construction update. Mr. Dave Velasco with videos for updates. It's good to see the building going vertical. They are a little ahead of schedule, which is awesome. Our entry.
Is that one on time as well? Fabulous.
Yes, it is on track, and we will be opening in August of 2022. I want to thank Mr. Brown and Huckabee Architects for putting those videos together. It's always nice to be able to just get a little bit of a glimpse into what is happening in each of those sites for our community. So, thank you for doing that.
Absolutely.
Those are the pictures that were online, so if anybody wants to look through those or read about all of the updates, those are posted.
We didn't have any open forum agenda-related items, so everybody that signed up will speak at the non-agenda-related items when we have an open forum right before we go into executive session.
Okay, so, next up is consent agenda. We only have one item, and that's to approve the minutes from the January 24, 2022 meeting.
All right, it needs a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Kelly, second.
Second.
Thank you, Jan. All in favor? Here we go.
Okay. Next up, we have education, and we have, this is a pretty exciting moment for Prosper ISD. We have worked for multiple years trying to get the JROTC program. I want to give full credit to Mr. Shirley. He's done a ton of work for months to be able to make this happen for our students, and so, I am asking for your consideration and possible approval for a JROTC Army program that will begin in 2022. It will be housed at Rock Hill High School, but if Prosper High School students are wanting to participate in the program, then we will provide transportation and work our schedules between the two high schools, so those students at Prosper High School can be a part of it. And inside of your packet, there is the breakdown of expense and kind of startup costs, but also looking at what do we need to be able to sustain the program once we have that in place. So, you can kind of see that breakdown there. An average of 150 cadets.
Wow.
That's great.
The sustained costs, that's an annual cost, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
As our district grows, is there a possibility for this program to be one day at each high school?
Yes, and actually, we put in also for the Air Force, and in the past, we've put in for Marines, so we've tried various different branches, but just really didn't get the bites to be able to get it. But the Army, we were able to do, so we could certainly, and we will continue to look at that. There's a lot of specifications when you put a JROTC program in place. They want to know exact measurements of the classroom. You have to have an exact measurement on a storage facility, obviously, the rifles, even though they're not shooting actual ammunition, but we also have to think about where are we going to store those guns. And so, there's a lot that goes into this, and I will say, the Army does a good job of really lining everything out, as expected that the Army would do. But we would like to see multiple coming into our district, so we'll continue to work to pursue those. But I will say, this has probably been about four or five years trying to make this happen, so, good job, Mr. Shirley.
All right. All right, we've all had this information in the packet. Anybody have any more questions about this program? If not, entertain a motion for the approval of the JROTC Army program.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you, Deb. Second?
I'll second.
All right, Deana, all in favor? Proudly, that's fabulous, great.
Okay, so, certainly, we've had some less than great weather. We were fortunate in our first round of snow and ice to be able to use bank minutes. The Texas Education Agency, the expectation is that our students are on instructional minutes, which is equivalent to 75,600 minutes per year. And so, we have to watch literally every single instructional minute. And so, we pad in days for that when we're building the calendar. We were able to use those back at the beginning of February when we experienced bad weather. But as you all know, last week, it was a very different scenario, and we were out of those bank minutes. So, what we need to do at this time with the Texas Education Agency is ask for your approval for a missed school day waiver. That means that we will be making up our instructional minutes, and that will be on April 18th, which is a Monday. So, our students will be in session, and they were going to be out of school that day, but we'll make that time up on April 18th. And then, we're going to cross our fingers that no more bad weather, that this is the end of it.
And that was already posted on our calendar prior.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, it was on there as a bad weather makeup day.
I'll make the motion.
Well, I hadn't asked for it yet, Jan. You're getting...
I know, I'm like, excited about it. Spring!
We can't do it anymore. Okay, I will have a motion, Jan.
Yes, I'd like to make the motion.
Thank you. I'd like a second. Take a second. Thank you, Bill. All in favor? Very good. Very excited.
Will take us into business, and I'll have Dr. Penn make his way to present the financial investment report, tax report.
Good evening, Dr. Ferguson and Board of Trustees.
Good evening. Matt, we were chastised by your former district, was that what it was?
Oh, that's right, we were.
Yeah. You're with some of your...
I was actually walking up, I was like, how do I get Mr. Brown to make me a video? Because that's way cooler than...
Yeah, exactly.
But that music.
Yeah, with music and theme songs and everything. So, walking through January, this is of the end of January 2022, this is a, all of our investments by fund. You, in your investment report, have a breakdown of where those dollars are located, but that is by fund for us, with 443 million in total investments, and the yields that we have on those. This is the general fund investments compared to this time last year, just a little above where it was last year. You can see the main difference is just the bond funds from year to year. That's that September authorization that is being used right now, which is the difference in that. And then, revenue from our, just divided up, this is revenue to date between our local state and federal amounts at 160 million to date. And then, this is just showing that compared to the 215 adopted budget, so everything is tracking very well. Seventy-four point seven percent of that completed to date. This is the total tax collections. Most of that will fall off. Those are delinquent after January, so most of those will have a few come in in February and March, but most of the taxes were collected by the end of January. This is, you know, sixty-six percent a month ago, up to eighty-eight, so, that's very much on schedule with what we've seen before. Tax ag rollback, eight hundred and forty-four in January, a thousand. And then, total expenditures to date, kind of by major object, 94 million, and we're five months in on our fiscal year of our over 215 budget, so, all of those tracking Here today, 94 million of the 220 on the expenditures, so, and then, all of our separate funds that we break out are looking well from athletics, food services, positive cash flow for the year. That's looking well. We always want that to stay, stay in the positive. You want it to support itself. Debt service right now is, we've collected most of those taxes, but our first payments actually start in February, February and August every year, so in February, we'll see the expense side of this graph pick up. Construction Hall Elementary is about halfway. Construction Hall Elementary is about halfway on the budget with the expenses kind of right at halfway. And then, Walnut Grove is 20% in on the expenses. So...
Great.
The report, Dr. Penn.
Thank you. Appreciate you with us every month. We, that's moving pretty quick through those numbers, but we've all had an opportunity to see those numbers in our board packet. So, I appreciate you walking us through that. We need a motion to approve the investment financial report through January 2022.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Drew. Second?
I'll second.
All right. Thank you, Kelly. All in favor? Fabulous. All right. Thank you.
Next up, we have a consideration and possible approval for copier equipment and services. Know that I provided this information to you. Mr. Dave Velasco has provided us a pretty detailed report as far as cost savings and the companies that we looked at for these services. So, if you have any questions, certainly let us know.
Anyone?
No questions.
Okay. Well, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for the approval for lease of copier equipment and services.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Jan.
I'll second.
Second. Thank you, Deb. All in favor? Fabulous. Sell on the old stuff.
Yes. And now, we're looking at our outdated Dell equipment. And so, we are asking for your approval to be able to sell that, obviously. Being able to sell that will then bring some funds back, potentially looking anywhere between 62,000 to 69,000, depending on the condition of the equipment that we try to sell.
Right. Questions or comments on that? Yes, we do. Okay. Well, we'll take a motion for that.
I always have questions. I'm not asking any questions.
Really?
I'm going to make the motion.
Wow, even better.
When you're ready.
I'm ready. Please. Fire away. You have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Bill. All in favor? Fabulous. Thank you.
Okay. Nothing on the other one?
Oh, good.
So, we are right there.
Dr. Bailey, do you have the list?
Yes.
Okay. That's all right. As he's bringing that up, I want to make a comment. I was, what is, what time is it? 20, thank you. 25 and a half hours ago, or 26 hours ago, I landed in DFW Airport from a country that did not allow any religious freedom, or you can't worship the way you want to worship. And if you do so, you're in risk of being thrown in prison, or losing your job, or your family, or worse. And where there's no freedom of expression to speak out against the government, either or for the government, I guess you could speak for the government. But I just want to say how grateful I am to live in a country where we get to express our opinions, whether you support what the district is doing or speak against the district. That's the beauty of our country, and so, the beauty of our local governments. We have a time now where we allow you to do that. And speaking either for or against, or any issues that come to your mind, and I'm going to read the language that goes around that, the legal language. So, all public comments at a regularly scheduled meeting should be limited to school district governance and operations. If you have a specific concern related to an employee of the district or a specific student, you're encouraged to utilize the district's grievance procedures provided in Board Policies F and G, DGBA, or GF Local. Please note that the Board will not respond to comments or questions raised during public comment pursuant to Prosper ISD Board Policy BED Local. Audience participation in a board meeting is limited to the portion of the meeting designated to receive public comment in accordance with that policy. That's the time we're at now. At all other times during a board meeting, the audience shall not enter into discussion or debate on matters being considered by the Board. When necessary for effective meeting management or accommodate large numbers of individuals wishing to address the Board, the Presiding Officer may make adjustments to public comment procedures, including establishing an overall time limit for public comment and adjusting the time allotted to each speaker. However, no individual shall be given less than one minute to make comments. As Presiding Officer of this meeting, and based on the number of individuals who have signed up for public comment this evening, each individual will be allotted two minutes to speak. Please note that there will be two time slots. We've already gone over that, I think. Please, please, please. When the meeting starts. When the meeting starts. Please also note that if you begin to speak to an item that is not on the agenda during the public comment time for agenda items, I will ask you to stop speaking and wait until the non-agenda time for comments. We've already passed that. Additionally, I think it is important to address the Board's expectations for decorum during this public comment time. While the Board certainly encourages members of our community to speak about any school governance or operations topic during public comment, and while we know that no one approaches the Board unless they care deeply and passionately about the matter they bring before us, we ask that each speaker conduct him or herself in a polite and civil way while addressing the Board. The Board will show each speaker courtesy and respect while he or she is speaking, and we simply ask that each speaker show the same to the Board. Should any speaker disregard this request and become a disruption to our public meeting, I will be forced to prematurely end that speaker's time at the podium. Additionally, should any audience member or group of audience members become a disruption in our public meeting, I'll be forced to remove that person or that person or group from the meeting. Actually, I will ask that that be done. I don't think I will do that personally. Thank you in advance for observing these expectations, and the Board of Trustees appreciate your active participation in the school district. Finally, it is important that the Board, to the Board, that we hear from parents and other individuals in our community. To that end, when we ask each speaker gets to the podium, we will ask you to please tell us your name and whether you live within Prosper ISD boundaries. And our first speaker for the evening is Chrissy Ball. And behind Chrissy Ball will be Katie Nguyen. Nguyen, just to get you in order. All right. Ms. Ball?
How many do we have tonight?
I think we have 12, I think.
Good evening, everyone. I am Chrissy Ball. I am a member of the Prosper ISD family, and first want to say we appreciate all that you guys do. I am here tonight to speak about the books and the conversations that have been happening within our community regarding books. I am not here to say whether I am for or against that, but really to just shed light on the conversations that have been happening within our community, and also recognizing that there is a political agenda here and that there are resources that are being used, that are being taken away from our children to address this situation. It has also been known with these conversations that people haven't actually taken the appropriate measures in addressing their concerns first before coming to social media. So, I want to make sure that that is public. I would also like to know if you guys can share publicly how much money and administration resources are going towards these political agendas, that we know now that there are voting and people that are running for the school board, that we are well-informed before these elections, so that we know who is being promoted and paid for to have a political agenda when the public school system is not meant for that. It is meant to serve all children. Thank you so much, and my hope for the parents in this community is that we all act as adults and not as children, because they are watching. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chrissy Ball. Thank you very much. Katie?
Nguyen.
Nguyen. I'm sorry if I...
How you doing, Nguyen?
How you doing, Nguyen? And then, Mr. Herblin, after Ms. Nguyen.
Yes. And I do live within the district.
Thank you.
And I actually brought one of the books that was submitted to be removed from the district, because I don't understand why this book was included, and I don't understand why the majority of the books were included. So, I'm going to read a portion of it. This is a book about, called Perfectly Norman. It's about a little boy named Norman who grew wings. And he was ashamed that he had wings, so he decided to wear a coat. But finally, it occurred to Norman that it was the coat that was making him miserable, not the wings. Why don't you take that scruffy old thing off, suggested his mom and dad. Norman looked up at them hesitantly. His parents smiled and nodded. Norman smiled back. Then he threw off the coat and let his wonderful wings fan out. He noticed a few other children wearing thick, heavy coats of their own. They looked up at Norman and around at one another nervously. There was a moment's pause, and then, whoosh! The sky was filled with flying people. Norman had never felt so happy. He realized that there was no such thing as perfectly normal, but he was perfectly Norman, which was just as it should be. I am here tonight for all of the Normans and all of the children that will not be represented if you take away books that are not of just the majority children in this district. Every child deserves to be represented in our books in our district. Every child deserves to feel special. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. We have Mr. Herblin, and then Stephanie Razer. Razor? 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 Gosh, I'm messing them all up tonight. All right, Mr. Herblin.
Good evening. I live at 3797 Bridle Bend in Prosper, and I do have a granddaughter in the system. I spoke to you guys last month about the LGBTQ and the pornography in the books, and how I requested that you guys do something about that. It's my understanding, very little has been done about that. And what we're talking about, folks, are books that if I came over to your house to read them to your daughters, or your kids, or your grandkids, you would not let me do it. I wouldn't let you read them to them either. So, you're in a situation now where you have to make a decision. Either support LGBTQ themes in our public library books, along with pornographic pictures and stories in our books, or you don't. And sitting silent and not taking action is not helping the situation. You're going to catch heat either way you go. In fact, you're going to catch more heat if you do the wrong thing. Okay? If, I'm sorry, if you do the right thing. If you take this stuff out of the system, it's coming at you. You're going to be falsely accused of being all kinds of things. But it's the right answer. So, I just want to encourage you guys to do that. And if your stomach is in knots, or you're a little bit afraid or nervous, and I say this with all due respect, because you guys are leaders, and you have to make decisions. And if you can't make that decision, then you need to step down. And I mean it all the way over here, too, everybody. And I don't, again, I don't mean it ugly, but you're in a position of stalling is not going to help the situation anymore. So, I beg you to make your decision and make it loud and clear. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Razer, and then Mike Bennett.
Hi. I'm Mrs. Stephanie Razer. I'm precinct chair 29 here in Salina for the Collin County GOP. My address is public record, but for anybody who wants to know, I live in Light Farms. You know, I went over in my head a million times what I was going to say tonight, and standing here and watching the children perform, we all stood and said the pledge. Most of us bowed our heads in prayer, because that's the community that we are. But we do have families in this community that maybe don't say the pledge or bow their head in prayer, and I understand where they're coming from. But I also want to say to you that I think that 99% of everybody sitting in this room is going to say that anything that is graphically sexually explicit does not belong, and that is all that I'm asking. The second thing is that we are so lucky here in Prosper. We are socio-economically secure. Most of the people in our community are professionals, and even leaders in our industry. Use us. We want to help. We have volunteered. We are not the enemy. We are parents, and we want an advisory board for the library. I understand 20,000 books and one librarian trying to go over all of those every time we open a school. Who could do that? We want to do that. Let us help. Please, I implore you. And for everybody else sitting in this room, some really inappropriate things happened this afternoon in some of the elementary schools, Light Farms being one of them, and I am angry, because that's my precinct in my backyard. And if my son was still at Light Farms Elementary, I'd be very angry what was on those signs today. So, can we all step back and remember that we're supposed to be the adults? Every single person here is fiercely passionate about the children and what we think is appropriate for them, and we need to stop losing sight of that. We are not enemies. We are a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Razer. Thank you. We have Mike Bennett, and then followed by Courtney Sparks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, at, excuse me, at 4:55, I was able to log into my son's school library. So, the same language that was provided to him through a school library, through a school system, I expect the same courtesy for me to present it. Okay? So, the reasonable intelligence has left the building way out of spec. So, when I log in, I use the, there's a little button called search. It's called negative words, negative keywords. Let's just use that. It's phenomenal character. Push button, negative keyword, it's going to be in there. Reason I say that is because when I log in, he's 12 years old on the school library. I see chapter titles such as Phone Sex, Phone Sex 2, Put the [BLEEP] in Casanova, with the discussions as, no, but did he, but no, but he did teach me how [BLEEP]. Might it, might be a [BLEEP] or a sauteed [BLEEP]. Yeah, Earl, I'm going to eat [BLEEP]. For all you [BLEEP] that's in this, that allow your schools, your daughters, your boys, to allow this to go on, you better get [BLEEP] together. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bennett. Courtney Sparks, and then Andrea Dietz.
Hello. My name is Courtney Sparks. I live in the district at 5205 Black Elm Drive. I'm on the east side of the district. I'm a mom of four children. Two of them go to Prosper ISD currently. One is famous. He's right behind your head there. He'll be in kindergarten at Baker in the fall. I am here today to tell you that I love Prosper ISD. I, starting with the educators, and including our very talented and capable librarians, our staff, our principals, our counselors and administrators, as parents, we all owe you a debt of gratitude. I love the sense of community and belonging that my kids feel as part of this district. I love the Prosper promise that encourages parents like me to be involved. I love that we, as parents, through a program called Destiny, can hand-select the content that our children can access in our campus libraries. I've reviewed the book titles on the infamous list, and I read book reviews completed by Prosper ISD parents and even some students. There's a common thread, and it's not one of love, belonging, and a sense of community that I described earlier. It serves to divide, not to unify. I urge you, the Board of Directors, and you, Dr. Ferguson, to continue to encourage the parents who have or want to remove books that reference healthy LGBTQ.
Thank you, Ms. Sparks, for your time. Thank you very much for speaking with us tonight. We have Andrea Dietz, followed by Douglas Brown. Did I get the name right?
Yes, you did. Thank you. Hi, y'all. My name is Andrea. I have three kids in Prosper ISD. I think that we can all agree on things. We can all agree that we want what's best for our children. We can all agree that there are certain books that are not appropriate for our school libraries that we would not want our children to be reading. And I think that we can all agree that there should be a robust process to define what that line is and what is and isn't appropriate. However, when a few inflammatory books are being used as a cover to also exclude lovely books that only include references to gay and transgender characters, that crosses my line. I want you all to help me turn my children into strong-minded adults that accept everyone for who they are. And even more importantly, I want those children, who God forbid, right now, may be feeling that they are completely alone and that they don't belong in this world, to feel love and acceptance. I think that this list of books makes those children feel the exact opposite of that. And I pray that you all agree with me and that you will do what's best for all children in PISD. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dietz. Douglas Brown, and then Christina Stevenson.
Hi, guys.
Hello.
Longtime fan, first-time speaker.
That's good.
Good evening. The majority, 61% of these books, being pushed for banning are LGBTQ-focused. They should not be removed after review for only having LGBTQ content. We all want the best for our education, best for our children and their education. 94% of Fortune 500 companies have LGBTQ, get tongue-tied, non-discrimination policies in place, and we're not preparing them for the real world by hiding our diversity. More critically to our kids is this. The second leading cause of death for young people ages 10 to 24 is suicide. Care to guess how many, what percentage or number of times the rate of LGBTQ youth attempt suicide or contemplate it? Five times the amount of non-LGBTQ youth. Okay? Religious beliefs, I'm a Christian, have no justification here, because this is a public school system, not a faith-based school system. Prosper's own slogan, "A Place Where Everyone Matters." Why are we then considering marginalizing, marginalizing this minority? We need to do better. History has never looked kindly on those who have banned books. And I'm not saying don't ban some of the books. If they're explicit, if they're sexual, by all means. Our kids don't have any reason to be looking at that. But banning it just because it's LGBTQ is wrong. America's already decided this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Christina Stevenson, and then Nola Oyakawa? I bet I missed that one up. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Christina Stevenson. I am a prosper resident and parent to a six and 13-year-old. I have three main points that I would like to make tonight. Number one, I disagree with book banning as a general practice, especially when it's based off of a biased and uninformed list. I fully support the current formal process that Prosper ISD has in place for reviewing of concerns in books, especially the requirement that a parent read the book in its entirety before completing and submitting the review request for each book. Books should not be removed from the library shelves without going through this formal process. As Dr. Ferguson stated at the last meeting, parents already have the ability to restrict their children's access to specific topics and/or titles, so there is no reason to change the current formal process, uh, review process. Number three, I want to request disclosure from the school board to the public if decisions are being made to remove books from the school library shelves. So far, I've personally read eight out of the 82 books on the list, and I'm working on the rest of them. While reading them, I felt compassion, sympathy, sadness, joy, laughter, and understanding, all feelings that I want my kids to experience when they read books. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Nola Oyakawa, please. You want to pull, can you please pull the microphone down so we can hear it there? Thank you.
Um, uh, my name is Nola Oyakawa, and I'm also talking about the books. And I'm left-handed, and a hundred years ago, they didn't let you be left-handed. They thought it was evil. And, uh, I dissolve to be left-handed, and I dissolve to read books about people who, who are also left-handed. My friends with other differences dissolve to read books that educate and help them. Deal, deal, school board. Please don't have, take away any books that help students, so that everyone feels welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Nola. Very nice. Very brave. Janie Oyakawa. Janie, yes, ma'am. Sorry.
I feel like I can't follow her. I am Janie, and I'm a mother of six. Two Prosper graduates who are succeeding in the world currently. One is in trade school, and one is on a full scholarship to become a sign language advocate and interpreter. And four that are still in the schools. I think a lot that I would like to say has been said. I just want to make it clear that I don't think this is actually about books. I think that there's a group of people who are not advancing their political ideas in the social marketplace the way they would like to, and they've decided to make our schools, and especially the school board, their battleground. This is a litmus test. If you guys will choose to support a political ideology or choose to make resources of all different types, even that some might disagree with, available to our students. People can decide what enters their home, and we have methods for them to do that. But they should not just decide what limits coming into my home or into my children's mind. Help us prepare them for the future. Please, choose the right side in this test that's been placed before you. Don't be on the side of the book banners. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oyakawa. Cora Oyakawa.
Hello, my name is Cora Oyakawa, and I'm in eighth grade in the Prosper School System. There is nothing wrong with these books. People just want to take them out, because they are scared and surprised that there are people out there who think differently than them. They are scared that people of this, of the queer community are finally starting to get a little respect. These books are educational and can help people feel normal and welcome. For example, Perfectly Norman. In the book Perfectly Norman, Norman develops wings and feels different, so he hides his wings with a coat. In the end, Norman realizes that it is not his wings that make him feel bad, it's a coat. Lots of people are seeing this book as gay, but nothing in this book says anything about being gay. It's more the bigger idea of just being different and having any differences. So in a sense, people are just gaslighting these books to find a reason to take them out of the libraries. Please keep these books in our library to help educate me and anybody else who feels different and not welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Cora. And our last, uh, thank you very much. Our last speaker is Jim Bloom. Sure. Take your time.
No, I don't want any of your microphone.
No, we won't start until you get up there.
Dr. Ferguson and Board, thank you very much. My name's Jim Bloom. I'm father of an eight-year-old girl, Lilia, who's in the second grade at Wentzong Ranch Elementary. I'm speaking out tonight against the removal of books from our libraries. Each of you has been sent an email with a, a piece I wrote about that. This seems to be part of a hyper-partisan tribal wave taking over our country. In San Francisco, three members of the school board were recalled, rightfully, in my opinion, for trying to change the names of schools named after George Washington and Abraham Lincoln. You can file all of this, including the removal of 82 books, about the LGBTQ community in a file called Politics Run Amok. None of these books is required reading for classes. All are on the shelves of the library as an option for students to read. Any parent should understand what their child is reading. Monitor and discuss any book. What a parent does or does not allow to be read in their home is their First Amendment right. And as a Jew, I hope that the books such as Mein Kampf and the Protocols of the Elders of Zion, Elders of Zion, are on the shelves. Students researching the issues around World War II, antisemitism, fascism, deserve to know what, where are the roots of these, this antisemitism, and these volumes, need these volumes at their fingertips. What we ban from the library is something that can, and frankly, will escalate into something ugly. There will be a petition to outlaw books by conservative authors like Mike Huckabee and Ann Coulter. And then there will be answered by another petition. They will be asked to remove books by the 1619 Project, Isabel Wilkerson, and others. And it'll just go on until the shelves are empty of anything meaningful.
All right, Tom. Mr. Bloom, thank you very much for speaking with us. All right, thanks to everybody that spoke. Greatly appreciate everybody's hearts. Again, as I said earlier, nobody comes to speak to us unless they are passionate about the topic, and I could, no shortage of passion, so appreciate everybody taking the time to do that. Now need a motion to move into executive session?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Beavers, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Kelly. All in favor? All right, we're gonna retire into executive session. We'll do that work there and come back, uh, and back in probably, I don't know, long. You're welcome to stick around if you'd like. Thank you. Okay, it is nine, no, it's, what is it?
Eight fifty-three.
Eight fifty-three. We're back in session. Keep for sticking around. We have personnel. We need a motion on resignations.
I'll make a motion on the resignations.
To receive the resignations. Thank you, Deb.
I'll second.
Thank you, Bill. All in favor of receiving those? Aye, unanimous. We need a motion to approve the new hires.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Dina. Thank you, Jana. All in favor? And we have a resolution on, um, the inclement weather, um, resolution for inclement weather for the payment of the, uh, the, what is it, non-exempt?
Employees.
Employees.
I would like to make that motion, please.
Okay, thank you, Drew.
I'll second.
Thank you, Kelly. All in favor? Great, I think that's the end of the business for tonight, so I'll have a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Bill?
Second.
Deb, all in favor? Great, we're adjourned. Thank you for staying around.
Good night.